With that, I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Simsbury Board of Education. Today is May 26, 2015. And good evening, everyone and everyone at home, and welcome for being here. And we have an exciting night tonight, and we will start off with recognitions. And we have quite a few this evening.
We do. All right. I got to say this at the last meeting, too. It's my favorite time of the year because we have more of an opportunity at this time of the year to really celebrate the accomplishments of our wonderful staff and our students. So we get to do a little bit of that tonight as we kick this meeting off. And the first person I would like to introduce is Melissa Farrington. So Melissa, if you could just move forward just a little bit. I know I don't want to call you out too much. But Melissa is here as our Educator of the Year. The Chamber of Commerce holds a luncheon on an annual basis in which they honor a public servant of the year, and the board has an opportunity, or we have an opportunity, to recommend an educator of the year. And in doing so, we named Melissa Farrington this year as our Simsbury Educator of the Year. And Melissa is a familiar face to you. She was here not too long ago at a board meeting, so I'm sorry we brought you out twice. But Melissa, of course, is the teacher of Computer Science at Simsbury High School, and she's taught at Simsbury High School for seven years. And when we think about truly impacting education in this day and age, I think what Melissa is doing with students in that program with the support of the high school administration is simply remarkable. The program has grown significantly over the course of the past several years under Melissa. Do we start with one section? Now we're up to five or six sections?
Yeah, we're getting there.
We're getting there. But you'll remember students coming out and talking about their engagement, their passion of being involved with the Computer Science courses. And when we think about student engagement being so important, are we really hooking kids? Do we have their best interests in mind? The personalization of learning, I think what we're doing in those Computer Science courses is unique to each and every child in what their interest level and what they bring to the course. And of course, we talk a lot these days about college and career readiness with the new standards, and are we preparing our students in the best fashion we can? And I can certainly say that the work Melissa is doing with her students really exemplifies that. You are an exemplary teacher. You're a fantastic teacher. We wanted to take this opportunity tonight to just thank you. Thank you for everything you've done for our school and our kids. And we get to go to a really nice luncheon on Thursday, which will be great. A few of us are going. Lydia will say a few words about Melissa at that luncheon. But I just wanted to take a few minutes this evening and congratulate you on your latest accomplishment. So thank you. We won't make you give a speech or anything. Don't worry.
Well, I could. I was supposed to say.
You know, Matt, I just want to say that not only the impact that it had at the high school, but the K-12 impact that you brought that Computer Science Week in December across the district, and that was with you and with Jaclyn really leading the charge, and that was really well.
And we have to remember that it was not just the two of us.
Correct.
You helped us a lot, and it took every principal in the district and every teacher in the district to make it happen. And I'm grateful to everyone, and hopefully we can do it again this year. I'm looking forward to it. My students are already talking about it, so hopefully we can do that again.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
Great. All right. We are now on to our next recognition and presentations, and we have CAPE Student Leadership Awards. And Mr. Sullivan, you want to start off with that, and then I'll...
I'm happy to start.
All right.
I'll have Mallory step forward. Two fabulous student leaders that I get to introduce to the board tonight. One very familiar to you, one maybe not as familiar, but just as spectacular. And these are your awards. This is the CAPE Award, and it's about student leadership. It's about kids who have served in formal leadership but who really set the example for the rest of the student body. And I have two fabulous ones to bring forward tonight. Mallory, as you know, has served in the capacity as your Board of Education representative, stepped forward last year as a junior when that process started to interview for the position in the beginning of that. People just kind of came forward. Now it's a pretty healthy interview process to be chosen. Comes to that after serving... Are you all four years as the president of your class? All four years as the president of the class of 2015. So she will be opening your graduation ceremony as the president. And about both of them, I want to point out that an important new organization in our school arose in the past few years called Best Buddies, which is students partnering in social activities with students with disabilities. That chapter was resurrected in the last two years, and it's not a coincidence that these are two of the officers who got that going. So very significant accomplishments on leadership. Mallory, would you have people tell you where you're headed next year? What your plans are?
I'll be going to Villanova University.
No major yet?
Possibly education, possibly math, or something like that. I'm not totally sure.
Just put them together.
Tommy Durst is our male student leader that was chosen for this year. In addition to serving on the student council as a vice president, he has been active... He actually sought out an opportunity, may be familiar with an organization known as Boy State, where students from across the state go through kind of a government, mock governmental structure. We had not really actively been sending students. One student that said it out on his own, I remember this meeting last year, Tommy says, "I think I want to do it." He showed me how to apply to get it done, and really took the bull by its horns and represented Simsbury High School. Also has served in that capacity as an officer of Best Buddies, has been active as a captain in athletics, a runner. Made it here from the track meet today, just in time. And the other thing, you may recognize Tommy is... I mean, it's a lot of student leadership stuff. He's a leader in another way. You will see him at graduation because the coolest band in the class of 2015 is called Takes It Through the Gift Shop. And Tommy is... I mean, you do all that, and then you're like the lead drummer for a rock band. So, and Tommy has, again, represented Simsbury High. Incredible. That notion of service is going to continue, as I have him tell you what he's headed off to do.
Nice, this is Military Academy at Westport. Want to major in Arabic and history. So we'll see how that goes.
And the other thing I know about these two students is that they have four of the best Simsbury High parents we have ever seen. Tommy Barnard and Chrissy Barnard here waving, and then Matt Durst and Jenny... Where'd Jenny go? There's Jenny right there. So great parents who have supported two great...
Now we can all see why you were chosen, you know, for this very impressive reward. And I just want to read something on here. They talk about leadership in here, and Mr. Sullivan has certainly spoken about how you've simplified that and developed, you know, your leadership skills. And one thing in here, your principal considers you such a school leader. So it does say it in here, and has given you quite a high mark. So with that, I would like to present to Mallory Barnard, the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, awards the Student Leadership Award to Mallory Barnard for distinguished leadership in school activities in the early life. So there you are. I hope you have a very prominent place to hang this at home. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And the same also goes for you, Tommy. It's the same exact thing, but I hope you have a very distinguished place with this. And good luck to both of you next year, and we look forward to hearing such wonderful things about you as we have throughout the past four years. So great.
Lydia, we also have two middle school honorees, Isabel Dowd and Griffin Dorman. So we have Mr. White, the high school prince of middle school.
Excuse me?
I'll stop talking.
It's very hot out.
It's my pleasure to recognize two of our students from Henry James. So Griffin, if you want to come up and join me. So we are very proud to introduce you to our two CAPE recipients this year. And Henry James, of course, our process involves really staff nominations. Our teachers spend a lot of time considering various students from our eighth grade class, and of course it goes to a faculty vote, and so a lot of time consideration goes into these selections. It's always such a tough decision for us because we do have so many great students that this year's awards go to both Griffin and to Isabel. They're both eighth grade Green Team students, so this year, we have two students from Green Team representing our school. Griffin, recognized by his teachers really for, among other things, outstanding academic ability, especially with rigorous concepts, is something that his teachers really admire about him. Also, Griffin's somebody who leads by example. And so really, in the words of his teachers and those who recommended him, just through his consistent decision-making, through positive choices, really exemplifies the H.J. way in our school. So just his daily efforts coupled with his academic motivations, let his Green Team teachers and others to recommend him this year, so we're very pleased to share that with you. And Isabel, also all-around great student. Her teachers recognize her for her attention to detail in her academic work, and so that's something that really has her stand out. She's recognized as a leader in class discussions and her volunteers around the school. Her teachers describe her as a natural leader. So she also has outside of school a competitive swimming, which she also is involved with. So we're very pleased to have you all sitting here tonight representing Henry James.
Excellent. Congratulations.
This is the favorite part of the year, because we rate honor again to present these awards to two very wonderful, outstanding students from Henry James Middle School. And Griffin, this again is for you. Congratulations. Being chosen for the CAPE Student Leadership Award for your principal. Mr. White, there he is, and I hope you have a very prominent place to hang it. Same with you. You were chosen on your leadership abilities and your outstanding performance at Henry James, and we hope to, you know, hear and see more continued participation, which gives us a free high school. So again, congratulations.
We also have an additional... Oh, parents. Yes.
Parents.
And do they have their parents?
Your parents.
Isabel, are your parents here? And congratulations to...
And Dowd.
Thank you for attending also and producing such wonderful students and children in our school system, very deserving of these awards.
We have one final...
Yes, we do.
...award this evening.
One more person forward. Like the CAPE student leaders, our CIAC student scholar athletes are chosen as one male and one female who represent the senior class as the combination of athletic excellence and scholarly excellence. Our male recipient could not be here tonight because he's appropriately at a baseball game. But Jack Petrina has really established a record over three years to play nine seasons of varsity athletics is really pretty remarkable. Key defensive player on the soccer team, then turn around and handle the ball all the time as a point guard on the basketball team, and then be not only one of the starting pitchers, but hitting something like .450 right now in varsity baseball. Truly an outstanding athlete in three very physical sports. But Jack probably, seeing so much in the sports, people probably don't know that he carries a straight A average in all honors classes at Simsbury High School, a number of, I think, five AP classes this year, and is, I will, on his behalf, he is headed to the honors program at Boston College, where he was in some... So congratulations to Jack. Our female recipient is the wonderful Sarah Franklin. Sarah is a fabulous athlete in the sports of field hockey and ice hockey. In field hockey, not only all-conference, but selected all-state and all-state academic at a nomination from her coach. As you can imagine, Sarah is... It's her height and her power. If you can't take your eye off her on the field, I mean, she is really something to behold. That then turns over in the winter to be on our ice hockey team, where her defensive skills have helped lead us to two straight state championships. And as I said, for Jack, somebody who in essentially all honors classes, carrying straight As at Simsbury High School while participating in that level of athletics. Sarah actually, last week at our awards ceremony, was one of only 19 people who received the designation as a four-year Simsbury Scholar. You know, really, a little less than 5% of the class that accomplishes that feat. And Sarah can make that happen while being one of the leading athletes at Simsbury High School. So congratulations to Sarah. Plans for next year?
I'm going to the UConn honors program, and I plan to major in ballet one year.
Are your parents here?
No.
Wonderful, wonderful. Again, another opportunity to recognize the talent in the students that we have, you know, here in our school system. So congratulations to both of these students.
Wonderful accomplishments, and I think when we talk about, you know, we talk quite a bit about the fact that our students are ready and active participants. Our parents support. We have great examples of families today that do that. Several of these students went to squadron. I know I'm not getting any older, but I remember when they went to the first school over at squadron. So it's amazing to see the accomplishments now as they head up through the middle level and have success at the high school level. So congratulations to the parents and the kids and the staff as well. Thank you for all you're doing to support our school system.
Good. All right. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're most certainly welcome to stay for the continuance of the meeting.
Yeah, this is your chance.
They're coming right back.
All righty. Okay. Well, nothing is going to be as exciting as that portion of the agenda. We are now on to the next item on our agenda, which is public audience. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the board may do so. Seeing no one, we will move on to our Board and Administrative Communications, and we will start with our award winner this evening, Mallory. Again, congratulations.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. Well, it's hard to believe that the school year is almost over. Things definitely seem to be wrapping up, but at the same time, just getting busier. This week, S-Back testing will finish up, and most sports teams are also wrapping up their regular season and will enter into the state tournament. And this past weekend, the boys and girls crew teams raced in NERAs, which is the New England Interscholastic Championship Regatta, and they both did, both the boys and the girls, did very well overall. And lastly, a few events to note. On Thursday night at 7:00 PM in the auditorium is the chorus concert, and I believe it's the final one of the year, so that should be good. The art show is being held all week in the gym, and there's lots of incredible work. I peeked in for a second today when they were setting up, and it's really amazing what they're doing. And lastly, Friday is senior outing at High Meadow in Granby.
We have good weather all week for all these activities.
Exactly.
Very good. So, great. Thank you, Mallory.
Nothing tonight.
Sue.
Nothing.
Tom.
All set.
Mikey.
All set.
Mike. Tara.
I think to add to Mallory's report, we are having the last senior citizen dinner on tomorrow night at the Simsbury High School, so that our senior citizens can have dinner together and go to the art show. So that'll be fun. It's our last one of the year. The last one was very well attended. We had about 45, 50 people there. It was great. So it's always a nice thing to do when we get our community into our community.
And what time is the dinner?
It's 5:30.
5:30. All right. Very good. All right. Also, good weather.
I have two quick updates, just to let you know that we're in the process of collecting information from principals and department supervisors for summer curriculum work, and I can foresee a number of good projects coming forward already, and we'll update you on those when we come back in August. And finally, our last professional development day will be on June 15. That's rescheduled from our March day. So we'll have two hours of district time, two hours of technology, and two hours of building time, and two hours for the high school. That afternoon will be on NIASC. They'll be working together on that. So that will be our last professional development session for teachers for the end of the year.
Sue.
Great. Two things. One, that we're still collecting our survey response data for the survey that we sent out on behalf of the Communications Committee of the Board of Ed. So a little plug, if you're a parent or guardian of a student in grades three, six, eight, or 12, and you haven't completed your survey yet, please do so because that feedback is very important for us as we continue our planning for the coming year. And also...
Sue, I'm sorry. Was that an emailed link to the appropriate parents?
It was an emailed link from Panorama. So if you did not receive that, then you certainly should contact me and let me know. But they'll also be sending out reminders, and they used the email address on the first primary, whoever the primary contact email was through Power School. So if you didn't, if the parent or guardian out there believes that they didn't get the survey, please contact me directly, and I will make sure that you do.
Okay.
Okay? Also, you know, we are in this, the spirit of celebration as we wind down the school year, and there's just so many opportunities for us to have our buckets filled. I had the opportunity to have that happen right before the Board of Ed meeting as I went to the Unified Sports Banquet. So it's just representative of exactly what we want inclusion to look like here in Simsbury Schools, and, you know, parents and students and teachers coming together under the leadership of Matt Spector, Elena Haley, and Brooke Bulmer. Just wonderful, wonderful outpouring of inclusion and care and joy in that room this evening. So I wanted to share that with the board.
Can I add one more plug?
Absolutely.
And I want to ask Kevin to say a minute about your duck race that Tooten Hills is putting on this weekend. Can we all go, and could you give us a plug on that duck race?
Sure. Our first duck race, the lucky duck race, will be this Friday at the Flower Bridge from four to six, and they'll be racing small ducks that have been purchased by the students as well as larger business ducks that have been purchased by a variety of different groups. So come on down. It'll not only be the race, but there'll be some carnival-like activities that are going on, and an silent auction, and a dunking tank. And feel free to sign up if you're interested in being in the dunking tank.
Are you going to be in it?
I will not be in the dunking. I will be there.
People can still buy ducks, though, correct? They were sending out flyers at the parade. They were handing flyers to everybody.
Yes, it's closing quickly, though. So, but it's been a great new school event, and...
Lisa Heffner and I took a picture with the duck. A big duck.
The duck rode in the parade in a convertible. So, yeah, it's going to be a great event, so feel free to come out, and we look forward to good weather and a good time. Great. Thank you.
Good.
Nothing this evening?
Nothing.
I am all set.
You are all set.
We have a big first agenda item to get to.
All right. All right. And I will just put in a plug. Tomorrow is Latimer Lane Elementary School Bike to School Day, correct?
Yes.
They're still on? So it is tomorrow morning. I'm just reading here, starting at 7:35 AM. So I know Tooten Hills had, our squadron line had theirs recently, and it was a very good day. So for those of you that are interested tomorrow, I will also be walking. I'll see you there tomorrow morning. So also, just very briefly about the legislative piece of it, as you know, the session will end in a few weeks. We have no budget. Just to give you the little highlights of where we are, that we have postponed, or should we have postponed? The legislature has postponed the graduate requirement, you know, about that bill that they were talking about recently or in the past several years. So that's waiting in the House at the moment. So that has not gone anywhere, and more to come on that. It's all in your advocacy highlights, a lot of details of what's been passed.
But we already meet the requirement anyway.
We do, we do, but on a statewide, statewide level. So we are one of those that do. The pesticide bill, as you may have heard over the years, that is a new amendment to this one. So this is what's going to happen with a lot of these bills that have passed either House or Senate or just sitting in appropriations. But you'll be happy to know that there's one bill to develop a strategic plan for Connecticut education, because we haven't had enough of those in the past few years. But that is also on the radar, so that's also being developed and being sent. So more to come on that. As you know, we always look forward to those strategic plans and more committees. So with that being said, we will be wrapping up. CAPE has their legislative wrap-up on Tuesday, June 9. So we will be at the Capitol. We will have the, you know, finale of what's been going on throughout the year, and we will give you more information, and it's also on the CAPE website. And we'll also be posting it in ours. So that's where we are. So hopefully, you know, some of these bills that have started out in the beginning of the session, those that are important will make it through. So that's it.
The MBR bill, so that's minimum budget requirement.
Yes, it is.
That's of interest. Really changes being proposed that would tie enrollment declines to more flexibility in minimum budget numbers. So that's something we're keeping a close eye on. It's going to be kind of a conversation changer in terms of various scenarios people might want to see based on that legislation. So we're keeping an eye out on that.
Absolutely. So that's it. All right. Very good. All right. We will move on now to recommended actions. So we have absolutely our first exhibit one, which is our really important action item here, appointment of Simsbury High School principal.
All right.
I have this exhibit one in your packet.
Thank you. So I am very pleased tonight to recommend to the board that they support the appointment or approve the appointment of Andy O'Brien as our next leader at Simsbury High School. Andrew, tonight really is the culmination of what's been, to say the least, a rigorous process, and we just talked about it in the culminating step here of Board of Education interview. You know, and Andrew, I think we have really found a unique leader. We have found somebody that champions the high school student, that knows how to push program and students academically and really build the community. And Andrew has spent the last four years as the principal of Nanowalk High School in Woodbury. We had an opportunity to go out, Lydia was a part of it, Sue, Erin as well, on a site visit that just really, for us, brought everything together. You know, we were able to see the work as it lives in that high school, and came away extremely impressed. And I can say, Andrew, I've shared with you, I've been impressed every step of the way. Andrew unfortunately even had to spend four, three or four hours with me, one-on-one.
It didn't run scared.
It didn't run scared. You know, really have built a successful run of leadership prior to four years at Nanowalk Principal. He was in Middletown Public Schools for, I believe, it was 17 years, 13 years as a teacher, four years as an assistant principal. You know, when you talk to people about Andrew, everybody has a real consistent message, you know, that he's student-centered, the kids come first, and he really knows how to work across stakeholder groups to really achieve, you know, outstanding outcomes. So not only do I congratulate you on the successful work you've done, I am thrilled that we're going to have an opportunity to have you join what I think is a really, you know, successful leadership team here in a great district supported by a wonderful Board of Education. So with that, I would ask the board to consider the motion to appoint Andrew O'Brien to the position of high school principal at Simsbury High School effective July 1.
Very good. I hear a second.
Second?
No, we need the motion.
Motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second. Any... We all want to make that motion. We're all jumping at that. Any further discussion? We've had discussion before executive session, so we did have time as a board to ask you some questions. All right. Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Very good. Motion passes.
Thank you very much. I just have to say I am incredibly excited to be the next principal of Simsbury High School. Throughout this process, it has been a wonderful, rigorous road, where I've had a chance to meet so many different people, administrators, parents, students, teachers, board members. And throughout that journey, I've just left each meeting more and more enthused about the possibility of being here tonight. So I really, really want to thank you all so much. This is a flagship high school. It's an incredible high school. Mr. Sullivan, you've done a tremendous job over these years, and I'm honored to be able to take the reins and move forward with this school, to grow professionally, to have a chance to work with some of the best teachers and best students and parents in the state of Connecticut. So thank you all very much. Truly honored.
Good. Thank you.
And you introduce your lovely wife.
Oh, yes. It's my wife, Katie. We're celebrating our 20th anniversary. It's coming up in September.
Oh, wonderful.
And our two boys are home. Evan is, actually, he's playing lacrosse tonight, and Declan is keeping our babysitter busy. I'd be watching a movie right now.
Well, again, congratulations and welcome, and we look forward to seeing you at Simsbury High School and along with your sons. Great.
And do not feel obligated to stay here for the entire meeting. And thank you for some fellow administrators that came out, I believe, in support. Maybe you could meet Andrew on the way out and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
There were quite a few. That was very nice of everyone to come and support, transition all of our principals and administrators.
I would also like to recognize Chris Kelly in the audience. Thank you, Chris, for attending. We haven't seen you in a while. Always nice to see a friendly face, none in the audience. All righty. Good.
It's a lonely trip.
All right. Yes, we are. What is... All right. All right, we'll now move on to Exhibit Two, Approval of Minutes of May 12, 2015 Meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
Stay.
Thank you, Tom. All right. Motion passes. We will now move on to Exhibit Three, Personnel.
Lydia, I have two personnel recommendations for the board's consideration this evening. The first is the retirement of Laura Salaturo. Laura's been our social worker at the elementary level for 15 years. So Edward would recommend that the Board of Education move to accept the retirement of Laura Salaturo effective June 30th, 2015.
All right. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Chair, a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
The second is a notice of intent to retire of Patricia Dorenzo. Ms. Dorenzo has been a school psychologist both at Central School and Squadron Line School for 27 years in the Simsbury School District. So I would recommend that the Board of Education accept the notice of intent to retire of Patricia Dorenzo effective June 30th, 2018.
All right, thank you. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you for a very long career here.
Very long.
We appreciate it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. We will now move on to Exhibit Four, Approval of Fee Schedule for Use of Public Schools. And I believe that is you, Burke?
Yes. Yes. So this is your second reading for this. We discussed last time that this was a 2.5% increase in our fee schedule that the board reviews annually for the board's policies. Revenues, these fee revenues go to the town. They're part of your budget book in those so-called pink pages. And we estimate for the last two years, $60,000 in these revenues, and we're on track again this year. Just about there.
Okay.
Any questions? I'm happy to answer them.
All righty. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. We are now on to Exhibit Five, Adoption of the 2015-2016 Textbooks. And that is you, Erin.
That is. At the May 12th meeting, I brought forward books from English, Grade Nine, Grade 12 AP, Precalculus, Biology, French, and Spanish.
There's a pile of books.
There was a pile. There's still, they're still around the corner. There have been no changes to the original proposal, and I wrote requests that the board adopt this textbook request for the 2015-16 school year.
Good. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I don't know how long you have.
There used to be a big pile of books, but it still is a pile.
It's big.
It's still big. But it's a good pile of books.
It is.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. All righty, we are now into our information reports. Exhibit Six, Our District Security Plan. And that is you, Susan.
It is. So this evening, I would just like to update the board on where we are relative to our district safety plan. As a first step, we'd like to provide a brief history on where we've been and currently where we are and where I see us going. So with that, just want to start off with some history. Of course, after the tragic events of Sandy Hook, I think districts across Connecticut and across the nation took stock on where they were with their safety procedures and protocols, as we did. And we made some initial recommitments to a couple of things that I just want to highlight. First, our door locking, even our front doors, and when we closed our front doors after students came in. The second was reestablishing a consistent visitor protocol. So what do we do when visitors come to our doors during the school day? And what does that greeting look like? And what are the protocols and procedures? So we had a recommitment to that across the district. Also badge adornment. Certainly, you know, it's important for people to know who is a Simsbury Public School employee. So we made that recommitment to wear those badges. But then again, we wanted to really take a deeper dive into both our protocols and our physical plan. So with your support as a board, we wanted a consultant to come out and take a look at those two particular aspects of the Simsbury Public Schools. So just as a reminder, we did contract with the Emergency Response and Crisis Management Team, ERCM out of Colorado, and they provided a very in-depth audit of our physical plan and our protocols. And really, their recommendations came in two areas, one of which was building hardening, and the other which I'll call an adjustment to safety procedures. So I just want to do a review of those with you and to certainly let you know where we are currently with those two aspects. First, building hardening. I think, you know, it was just over a year ago that Matt was talking about how he was really sweating as he was trying to, somebody, a teacher tossed him the keys and said, "Go ahead, try to lock my door right now," and how difficult that was to do, certainly under any kind of pressure. So you invested a lot of dollars into interior door locking mechanisms so that teachers could lock their doors from the inside. Huge improvement that we made, based upon a recommendation certainly of ERCM as well. We also have our key fobs, and I should have brought mine as an example. Do you have yours, Burke?
Neil does.
But Neil does. Neil?
I have mine.
Those are our key fobs. And, you know, we were using those sporadically across the district, but based upon our consultants, they said we really should use those more, because through these little computer disks, you can control who comes in and out of your building and who has access. And it was able, we were able to really make greater commitments there into and increase our security and our building hardening in that fashion. Also, in different aspects across the district, we've added protective film. We don't say particularly where that is, but the protective film placed over glass to make it more difficult to penetrate any glass in the case of an emergency. And then finally, around building hardening, two major main office capital projects, which we are in the midst of right now, that Burke is giving us updates as we speak, both at Henry James and Squadron Line, which are due to really unveil this summer. So we're excited about those. The next was around protocols that we have in place. And ERCM really took a look at what we were doing specifically around the concept, you might have heard, we don't use the terminology anymore, of code red. What do we do when there's an intruder in the building? And they really had us consider something called the Standard Response Protocol. So four actions of Standard Response Protocol, lockout, lockdown, evacuate, and shelter in place. And what these Standard Response Protocols allows you to do is have consistent language between buildings. So if students matriculate, they are able to know exactly what they need to do in the case of an emergency. And want to go into those a little bit more and share with you where we're at. So the Standard Response Protocol, again, these four areas. Lockout is really securing the perimeter in case there's a threat somewhere out in Simsbury. Let's say, for an example, there was a burglary and the police were looking, actively looking for a suspect in the area. You would do a lockout and basically secure your perimeter, and the main functions of the buildings would continue. The next is lockdown, if there was an intruder in the building. And that comes with the terms locks, lights, out of sight. And we're gonna talk in a minute how staff across this district, every single staff member and students know exactly what that means and what they're supposed to do. Also evacuate and shelter in case, you know, we need to evacuate a building for some reason or we need to shelter in place if there's a natural hazard, for example, how we go about doing that. So again, this Standard Response Protocol gives us consistency with, you know, what those directives are, but more importantly, what we're supposed to do if we need to enact any one of these four. So with those comes successes. All staff and students at every building have been trained, certified staff, non-certified staff, our preschoolers to our high school seniors, and they know exactly what to do. And we've increased the number of drills that we complete on a regular basis. And every single time we do a drill in this district, they are done collaboratively with the Simsbury Police Department. So they are there, the Simsbury PD, giving us just-in-time, right there, actionable feedback that we can use to really increase what we're doing, which has been wonderful. And I really, at this point, just want to give some kudos to our two SROs, Tim May, who's at the high school, and Todd Cushman, who's at the middle school and the elementary schools. They have really stepped up to the plate, and they exemplify what we want school resource officers to be, in any district, but specifically in Simsbury. You know, it's great, you walk around with either one of these two officers, and they are, the kids know that they mean business, but they're also rock stars. So they know when it's time to, time to be all about business, then they are all about business. But you'll see them shooting hoops with kids and knowing them by name and sitting down with lunch and really developing those relationships which are crucial to what we want that program and those resources to look like. So definitely want to give them their due. But those, again, getting back to the drills, we've increased our complexity of drills. We used to play it safe, quite frankly, with our drills, and now we're mixing it up. We are not announcing when our drills are necessarily going to be. We're having them at more difficult times, like lunch, like recess, like passing times, because we want to be emergency-prepared and not emergency-scared. And that's a huge success in collaboration with the administrators across the district and the Simsbury PD that we're really happy about. The other success is our district safety plan. So I want to elaborate that on that just a little bit more. Through some of the legislative requirements, we were required to submit a district safety plan on a template that was provided to us through the state. We were first required to submit that plan last July of 2014. A lot of great, hard work from our building principals certainly went into that, as well as this, it was collaboratively designed, not only with the Simsbury Police, but also with the Simsbury Fire Department. So that was, it's ongoing. Certainly, we're always looking to make improvements, to tweak things, again, to respond to the feedback that we're getting through these drills. But we're really proud of the fact that we have a very solid plan and we're putting that into action. So school teams will continue to make progress, and again, just really continue to develop their plans. The plans have a number of appendices, anywhere from, you know, asking staff if they have specific skill sets or backgrounds that we might know about, that we might not know about, I'm sorry, and that we might want to call upon in an emergency, things like that. So that, again, that will continue to progress. But again, wonderful work that we're doing collaboratively with the Simsbury PD and the Simsbury Fire. I think I've also shared with the board in the past, there is a pretty extensive training component to the requirements of the district's safety plan. And although they've backed off of those legislatively, there is some good core training that we want to do with all of our administrators to go a little bit deeper in what we call incident command and what that looks like in our schools. And actually, that training is being developed right now collaboratively between me and Kevin Kowalski, and certainly, we're gonna be folding Neil into that as well. So what does training look like for the faculty at the beginning of the year? What does ongoing development look like in this area? But we're really, we're really proud of that. So we are required to give an updated submission yearly. We're not sure of what all of those requirements will look like at this point, but we do know that the submission is going to be happening in July of this year. But, you know, I would expect that Neil would be updating the board as we continue to develop this work, but a lot to be proud of here. And I think what we're most proud of is that, again, it's done so collaboratively with our town PD, Simsbury PD, and Simsbury Fire, because that feedback's really important to us. So I don't know if at this point I might open it up to the board with any questions. Yes, Tom?
Susan, I'm just wondering if there is any metric or measurement system in place to determine whether or not the faculty and students really do understand the Standard Response Protocol that you've described?
So I think on a couple of levels. You know, first of all, we are going to be getting feedback on how safe, and that's not quite getting to your question, but I will in a second, how safe faculty and staff feel. And those are some of the questions that we're asking through our communication survey. So that is one certain metric that we'll be really interested in looking at. You know, Tom, I think the other is more, the evidence is more qualitative in nature. So when we go and do these drills, we are actually, at least once a year, going into every single classroom, and by we, I mean the principal, I mean Simsbury PD, sometimes first responders in Simsbury, as well as myself. And we're going in and giving teachers and students direct feedback right then and there. We look at positioning of where they are. We answer any questions that they might have. We quiz them. We give them tough questions. You know, what do you do in the case of you're in a lockdown and you hear a fire drill, a fire alarm go off? What do you do? And it's through those qualitative responses that I know we're hitting the mark on Standard Response Protocol.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have ERCM? Have they come back to look at how we've implemented the recommendations?
They haven't formally, Todd, but I am always emailing them informally and certainly giving them updates. You know, they are, they were very impressed with us in Simsbury and impressed with our commitments. So, you know, clearly, that audit sparked a very solid relationship. So whenever I have any questions or I'm kind of thinking about something, I will email John McDonald, who'll always ask me what's happening. We had very solid recommendations that we're following. So they, they've certainly talked about, you know, using us as an exemplar for, you know, what this commitment looks like to safety.
Susan, on the building hardening slide?
Yes.
You had the four items. Like, I just wanted to ask, like, what percentage of complete do you think each one of those would be? Like the door locking, is that all done?
The door locking mechanisms, let me just go back and I'll address each one.
I know the, the big ones, you know, the offices, that's underway and that's a project, right? But the top three?
Other than those, other than the main office projects, those are all complete.
Thank you.
They're all complete. You know, certainly, key fobs are ongoing because we're collecting them and redistributing them. And again, they're all computerized.
New people.
Exactly. Exactly. So, but all of the foundations are in place. Certainly, the film is in place and the door locking mechanisms are in place. Do you change the program on them every so often? I don't know if that's a good question to ask out loud, maybe not, but I'm just wondering about... Interestingly enough, and this is how I'm gonna answer your question by not answering it. And the reason being is because, you know, we certainly want to make sure that we have certain protocols in place, but we're not sharing everything out in public. And I would be happy to answer that in an executive session, and more of those detailed questions and responses certainly can be discussed there.
So we're gonna continue to work with ERCM on a regular basis as things happen around
around the country that we can learn from, we'll get updated protocols, or if they modify...
Certainly, if they change things, they will certainly reach out to us. They're always...
Are we on contract with them to do that?
We're not. We're not. Again, it was just this really great relationship that started, and they're kind of seeing us...
This is their business, working with districts, right?
That's correct.
So it seems like they would be a great resource for, you know, we don't want to learn here. We want to learn from things that occur elsewhere, and that's always an opportunity to review our own protocols, our own practices.
That's a lot of what the state has tried to do as a result of the tragedy that did occur in some of this new legislation.
Sure.
Get better definition to some of the best practices that have been elsewhere.
Yeah, I just think it's going to need to be updated as technology's improved.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah. Changes.
Good point.
I'm glad to see it's still, we're still in a good spot with it. Thank you for the update.
You're welcome.
Very good. And they work...
Susan, I'm still a little uncomfortable with the measurement of the real knowledge of this, because it's such an huge issue. It would only just suggest that we might at least consider doing one, I know, and nobody needs more reports and things like that, but I just wonder if it would make sense to at least think about doing one quantitative check to see if our faculty in particular really gets it. And if they do, that's great, but in the event that we get a really bad surprise, then we'd want to do something about it.
No, I would be welcome to hear certainly your ideas around what that quantitative, you know, measurement might certainly be. You know, I think what I do really appreciate about doing the drills often is, you know, and having the PD there, is we are timing things. Let's look at response, especially now that we're increasing the difficulty, quite frankly, when we're running these drills. Because when students and teachers aren't expecting it and to see them responding so quickly, that's really, that, I would say, is a quantitative measure. How quickly does it take the whole building to be locks, lights, and out of sight? And that's what you want. But certainly, I'm open to hearing any additional suggestions that you might have.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Very good. Thank you for that updated report. Remember how we started this?
Yeah.
Come a long way, so, and look forward to more updates with this firm also, so, right. They do other firms.
Mallory, you and your fellow students feel safe, correct?
Yes, completely. Like Ms. Lemke said, I think our last lockdown was during a homeroom period where most of the seniors are in the cafeteria, some seniors are just getting to school because they have first or second period free. People are running, like, errands, seeing teachers if they have to. Yeah. So, and everything went smoothly from what I know. And I also want to say there's posters in all of the classrooms and around the hallways with, like, information and, like, details for each of the four types of plans.
Thanks for that reminder, Mallory.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, we, very good, Sue. Thank you very much. And we certainly have asked some very good questions on your report. All right, we are now at our second public audience.
If you don't mind, I owe my students for the planned celebration, but I did not plan to be playing about another celebration that I, and I'll embarrass him just because he's here. I spoke about the Simsbury Scholars Ceremony, that Sarah Franklin had been a four-year Simsbury Scholar. Each year at that ceremony, we ask a community leader to come speak, to address the people who have been Simsbury Scholars for that year. And on May 16, this year, I asked your fellow former board member, Chris Kelly, to do the remarks, and he gave a terrific speech about the brilliance of three diverse people, and I will remember it, from Albert Einstein to Julia Childs to Mark Cuban. Weaved those people together to, wow, high-powered kids and parents and put together some remarks, and it's really just a special evening. And I have not had many guest speakers capture it as perfectly as Chris did with his remarks. So it gives me a chance to let his former board members know that he did that on behalf of Simsbury High School and did a terrific job.
Very good. Great, too. Thank you. Thank you very much, Chris. Very good. We always knew you would carry the torch even further than this board. Thank you, Neil, for that.